Okay, with the hour being after seven, we'll open up the hearing, the meeting. First item is minutes, September 19th. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have three, zero, one.
Sorry, three, zero, four.
Phil. Okay, we'll skip over the zoning surrogates here. Next item, Boyden Estates, would you find, Kyle?
Excuse me, sir Jaman.
Boyden Estates?
Yes. We furnished a letter, I think dated December 30th, or memorandum, to yourself, Mr. Chair, and in that one, we did not recommend reduction of the bond because there's a water main that's been up there for quite a while that isn't tested and operable.
Now, this is Boyden Estates.
Oh, I'm sorry, Boyden Estates. My apologies. No correspondence, but we did go up to Boyden Estates, myself and Chris Johnson, the assistant. We did a little miniature ass-bill to check things out and found it actually to be in very close to design grades and things and check the width. The subdivision is in excellent condition. I have no problem recommending the extension based on its status currently.
Okay. Make a motion to grant an extension of one year.
Second.
Boyden Estates. Second from John. All's in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, four, zero, zero. Done. Next one. Ninety-five West Street.
Mr. Chairman, Phil Mackey, 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 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, is Councilman Ford on behalf of the applicant. I'm here asking for an extension of standard condition sixteen of the site plan decision, which basically requires that all work be continued with, or excuse me, completed within two years, or an extension asked for. And basically what happened, it's twofold. As you may remember from the hearing, the site was contaminated, the cleanup took longer than expected. It went well, which is nice to know for the town, but it did cause delays in construction. And the second is, once construction did begin, additional footings and foundations that were not anticipated under the then parking lot were found. And again, just took longer for the site to be prepped for the building to go in. So, long story short, is they pulled the building permit in November of 2017. They did not start as anticipated due to the two considerations that we just, or I just discussed, and they were not going to be done by next month. I'm optimistic in saying that all of the outside site work will be done within six months. We're not entirely sure, so we're asking the board for a year extension because winter being what it is, we all hope for the best, but have planned for worst.
Okay. Does everybody know we're over talking?
No.
Kendall, the old Kendall, Cochran, the big one.
Didn't you say two years?
No, I didn't say.
You said one year.
I didn't say anything. He said one year.
So you look up for one year?
Yes, please.
Yeah. He said the cut standing was two years.
Okay.
The original condition allowed for two years, and then we had to come back.
Okay.
All right, so everybody knows what I, question for you, Phil, it came up. I got called the other day.
Sure.
The parking lot across the street, is that still Manzo's?
Yes.
So he owns it complete?
To the best of my knowledge, I don't know what he did.
Okay, well, Cochran doesn't own it. They were allowed to park there under some agreement.
Correct.
Okay, 'cause we got a question on the site plan, couldn't find it, dah, 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 dah. And it still appears, correct, Kyle, that they never signed it?
Yes.
Never endorsed it?
From what we, from what we understand, yep.
Uh, could be issues.
Could be.
For you guys especially, because you, so that's, you know, I know when he was here, he knew more than me, and him and Mr. Bobowski, whatever. So they slid the thing through. So, if I was your client, I'd be on the horn to him saying, you've got to have an issue because we can't, right now it's done being done out there.
Right.
Well, you know all the legal ramifications, so you might want to convey that to them.
I most certainly will.
Okay, we'll appreciate it, make life easier for all of us.
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to grant an extension time up through November 8th, 2020, as requested.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you very much.
Might as well do this Trails one, okay? In your packet, the Trails, Mr. Peoria, I can remember that, he must be well over his bond time, isn't he, Kate? This is, this is way up off 109, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this has got to be.
It was approved in 09, Mr. Chairman, or 10, somewhere in there.
Yeah, and he's never done anything, so.
Uh, the road is basically constructed, and as far as I can see, there may be some other punch list items like elevating hydrants and whatnot, but it essentially seems to be complete. One lot is still under construction at the end, I just visited it tonight.
Okay, because that's all bold, a ledge up there, I should say. And you don't recommend doing anything because of the water line, correct?
Correct.
Is this enough left on the bond?
Um, not knowing what's wrong with the water line and assuming the worst-case scenario that, that if you can't get it to test, you might have to reinstall it, it would certainly be somewhere in the ballpark to do that.
Okay.
If it's less drastic, it should be, have way more than adequate funds to fix it.
Okay. All right. My suggestion is we send Mr. Peoria a letter, tell, give him a copy of this, and also the fact that he hasn't asked for bond extensions, so he couldn't yank it, but he better get on it, I would guess. Does that make, do I say makes sense to everybody? We'll send Kyle's letter, and this is what happened, and also the fact that he must seek a, come to us, give us a status, what he's going to do if he gets in this case, and also request a bond extension. Is that all right? Is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So we took care of Trails, and I probably won't hold that one. And now we'll go back to the hearing. All right, with the hour being after seven o'clock, pursuant to provisions of Section Five, Chapter forty-eight of General Laws, Walpole Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 3rd, at 7:00 PM, in the main meeting room, okay, 135 School Street, on article, on one article for the proposed amendment to change the Walpole zoning bylaw, which is scheduled for the fall town meeting 2019, and under, in the book, it'll be Article fourteen, and it reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Walpole zoning bylaws to include inclusionary zoning bylaw, which bylaw requires large developments to include certain number of affordable units, donate land for affordable housing, or make payment in lieu of to the Walpole Housing Trust. For developments of six or more units, ten to twenty percent of the units, depending on the size of the development, shall be restricted, affordable in perpetuity. Developers not wishing to provide these affordable units shall either make payment to the Walpole Housing Authority, or may donate sub property to the town for future affordable housing development. This bylaw shall be administered by the Special Granting Authority, as defined in Walpole zoning bylaws. Purpose of such bylaw would be to produce a high-quality dwelling units, affordable to low or moderate income households, to prevent displacement of low or moderate income residents of Walpole, to assist the town in addressing local housing needs, as defined by Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty B, Section twenty through twenty-three, and assist the town in implementing Housing Production Plan." So with that being said, and we have, I guess you call the sponsors, I know it's by the selectmen, is someone going to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Someone, no, go ahead, Ben, I forgot.
All right, so, I can certainly kick off this discussion. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ben Barrett, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm also a member of the Walpole Housing Partnership. And I just wanted to talk about a couple of items related to this bylaw with you tonight, and then I know that there'll be a, a larger discussion, and other folks have come to say their piece as well. First and, first and foremost, actually, to start out, the, and just kind of a point of emphasis, that the bylaw, as it's currently written, is within the scope of the motion, and that's something that Town Council has confirmed, and it's something that the moderator has confirmed as well. So that's something that we had been working towards, and, and they've both agreed. And so, secondly, you know, this bylaw, and I want to reiterate, that this bylaw as written is just the first step in a process of bringing affordable homes to Walpole. And it will act as a building block that we can then use to jump off from and really do some, some great things, I think, in benefit of the town. It is not a magic bullet, that is something that it is not, and it's something that will be a living document, so to speak, in that it's going to require upkeep, and it's going to evolve over time, and we're going to want to revisit it, and we're going to find out what works, what doesn't work as well, maybe some things that we can do better. And that's something that, you know, the Board of Selectmen is committed to, the Town Administrator is committed to, the WHP is committed to. So, you know, the town and these groups are all on board with this and, and willing to take it forward. And for example, we know that through our outreach and discussions, that Yarmouth, who has had a inclusionary zoning bylaw for some time, is revising their bylaw this year, or considering revisions to it, because some parts of it are working well for them, some parts of it they want to revise. And so that's exactly the sort of standard operating procedures that we would look to follow in the years to come, should this be approved. And I think, I think that's a reasonable way to take it forward. So, also, I want to reiterate a little bit about what's gone into this, and the fact that the WHP, the, a lot of folks who are here tonight, you know, myself, Audrey Grace, our chair, Mike Tealy, the vice chair, Andrew Flowers, Willa Vanler, Phil Zacharowski, Liz Barrows, who are here tonight, have put months into the research and putting together this bylaw, really ever since we finished the Housing Production Plan last year, we've been working on this. And many of the WHP members have reached out, they've had one-on-one conversations with other towns that have inclusionary zoning bylaws, they've gathered the data from those towns to understand what has worked, what hasn't, what the languages that they've used, members of the WHP have gone to conferences to, you know, attend seminars of folks who know a lot about inclusionary zoning bylaws, know a lot about affordable housing, how towns, municipalities ought to put it in place. And to that, to that end, you know, there are dozens of towns that have enacted these, and I know that we've thrown a ton of literature and a ton of numbers and things like that at you, but the point being that there's a lot of historical data out there about what this, how towns use this, where they've had success, where they haven't. And all of that has been incorporated by us into the bylaw, along with all of the public hearings. I know Mike Tealy had, had conducted an excellent public hearing over at the Senior Center that was well-attended, and, and we got a lot of great input. All of that has been put into the bylaw as it stands now, and input from the Board of Selectmen, from you all here, and others as well. And we've also worked very closely with the Mass. Housing Partnership, the MHP, they've really been integral to this effort. And the MHP is made up of affordable housing experts, legal experts, lawyers, and they have put a ton of input into this bylaw, they've revised parts of it, they've made recommendations, they're the holders of a lot of the historical data that we've been able to use. So they've signed off on this. They, their sole purpose is to help towns put together these bylaws, and that's what they've helped us do. And then finally, Town Council, and I can say personally that I've spent a lot of time on the phone with Town Council, going through this, line by line, word by word, making revisions, and clarifying it so that Town Council can feel, obviously, they'll be at town meeting, they'll speak to it, so, so they can, you can hear it in their own words at town meeting, but, you know, that they're comfortable with it, and that if they need to defend it, or if there's an issue where they need to get involved, they will, and they're comfortable with it, and they've worded it in such a way that they think it'll be effective. And so, all of this intellectual capital has been invested in this bylaw. We at the WHP, WHP feel that it's a very solid bylaw, it's a great point for us to, like I said, use it as a building block to, to jump off on. And I think, again, what's important is that the WHP isn't going anywhere, we're all invested, and I think it's important that, you know, if we can get this in place, that we then have a measured mile, we have some measurable outcomes that we can take from this, and then go forward, and we can report back to you all, we can report back to the Board of Selectmen in six months, in a year, and, and say what is going well, what isn't going well, what impact has this had, and again, we can act accordingly. But we need to have it in place in order to do that. So that's what I have for this evening, and then I guess we'll move on to others, unless you have any specific questions for me.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Ben, maybe you could just go through the process of where this stands. So we have the, the article that was put on the, on the warrant, and then we have the, the work that's been, you know, being done by the Housing Partnership, and to frame a, a more detailed article that will be presented, you know, Finance Committee will be presenting that as the motion, so.
Yes, so that is the motion, yep. That was what was considered by Finance Committee in, in the meeting when Audrey and I gave the presentation to them, and that's what Town Council has reviewed, and, and the moderator has reviewed, yep, the actual bylaw text, is the motion, yep.
Has the Finance Committee voted?
No, what, what was the vote that they had?
Recommendation at town meeting, but we'll vote.
Yeah, right, so they had a recommendation at town meeting, it was fifteen, zero, zero, but they will vote, I'm under that. And then the Board of Selectmen is scheduled to vote a, a week from Tuesday, yeah, the fifteenth.
All right, quite, well, question I have for you, we're dealing with this one tonight, correct?
No.
Yes. Yeah.
It's what's before us, yeah.
It's what's before us. This is what we have to deal with. This is the one that has been presented to us through the Selectmen, through the Mass. General Laws, fourteen days they're going to give it to us, and we have to advertise within fourteen days. So this is what's before us tonight, which you gave us the other day isn't part of this public hearing, okay? So, we have to conduct this per what's already advertised, and we can't talk about what's here because it's not related to this, so.
Just a clarification, though, if, if, Mr. Chairman. So in, in, in Section Five, you know, in forty-eight, it only talks about publishing what the cut, what the subject is, doesn't talk about actually publishing the actual...
I understand, Phil, and that's, yeah, you don't have to publish if this was thirty-eight pages, you could just give it. But this is what the article is, this is a hundred percent of the article, so this is what is in front of us now. So, what I understand you're doing is you intend to go to town meeting and present the other stuff you've given us, correct?
Well, when you say the other stuff we've given you, yeah, that's what everybody has considered, that's what FinCom's going to get, that's what the Board of Selectmen is going to consider, that's what has gone out to everybody, and I believe the people that I, that are here that are going to speak tonight are speaking to that as well.
Okay, but I, I, I'm just telling you, we are the conduit for public hearing on what's published, and this is what's been published, and this is the only thing that we can do under this meeting. So, to speak on anything else will be outside of this, actually wouldn't even be on our, it would be somewhat violating the open meeting law because this isn't even on there, just this is. So my question to you is, you know, how would you like us to proceed? I mean, I'm asking, is, we can just take some questions on this, which isn't what you want, or we could take a vote just to say, we understand this is going to be presented later, and, and just do it like that?
Ben, has the revised text been published, like, to the public anywhere?
I'm not sure, to be honest, I don't know. It went out publicly, like, posted on the website?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, no.
Have your team let it know?
Well, right, it's been distributed to hundreds of people, but I don't know if it was posted publicly.
Jack, I don't, I don't doubt you or anything, but did, has Town Council, like, said that as they've ruled what was submitted to us as within the scope, have they also ruled?
We don't have anything from Town Council on that. What we have in front of us is, well, you know, ten line items, and that's it, that's what we had to, that's what we have, holding a public hearing on. What they, you guys have beyond that is a very detailed thing of an expanded article, but we can only deal, deal with what's here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's your, it's your meeting, Mr. Chairman.
I understand, I just...
What I'm saying is that, that, what you've received, the entirety of it, is what's going to be considered by FinCom, is what's going to be considered by the Board of Selectmen, is what's going to be considered at town meeting. So we, we can do tonight what you see as fit.
Can I ask a technical question?
Go ahead.
So if this is what was advertised?
Yep.
And does that mean this has to be a substitute motion at town meeting?
No, no. That's what we've worked with Town Council and the, and the moderator to clarify, that it is within the scope of the article, so there won't be a substitute motion. The bylaw is the motion.
So FinCom's motion becomes the main motion because it's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, so. No, I understand that part, that's how they vote, the vote gets presented, but what I'm trying to say is, so we have to look at what was advertised?
Yeah.
So that there was a public hearing on it, but if there wasn't a public hearing on this...
Well, we've got a, this is an apple with an orange, this situation. The town can go, town meeting can basically do anything they want within their own rules and regs. We're bound by the Mass. General Laws, and under Zoning Act, we have to advertise and can be the conduit for the public hearing, what was given to us, and this is what was given to us. How they approach it has nothing to do with us. So what we have in front of us is just the preliminary, so to speak.
And because the other boards weren't the ones who had the hearings, they can listen to the extended version?
They, they can do whatever they would like.
Okay, I get it.
If there, I mean, if there isn't a specific objection to it, I mean, we would appreciate it if we could go forward, but, well, obviously, this is your meeting, so we'll do what you say, but I know that there are people here that would speak to it, that have read it.
Read the other part.
The entirety of it, yes.
Yeah, and, and all I'm saying is, we have to keep it within the scope and within the agenda.
Two, two, two things?
Yep.
So, so one is the, the, and again, just going back to, to Section Five, you know, it just says notice of time and place of such public hearing of the subject matter sufficient for identification, and of the place where texts and maps thereof may be inspected, shall be published in a newspaper for general circulation. So it doesn't sound like it even had to contain the, the text of the article, if I, again, I, I could be wrong about that, but...
Yeah, you don't have to do the advertisement if it's like two thousand pages, you just give the, and which was done. But in this, this is the only thing that was given, this is the complete article that was given to the Selectmen, and, which was put on the warrant and given to us, so this is what we're dealing with. It's not a matter of advertisements, it's a matter of what we were given from the Selectmen. They have to give it when they get it and accept it, they're fourteen days, so this is what's given to us, and we have to advertise it. While we are as the conduit for, like I said, for the public hearing on any zoning change.
But, but one thing is the detail, you know, the, the article that's really going to go forward, in some ways, is within the scope of what was published, because it just gives more specifics about what it would be. So for example, in the published article, it says that, you know, be ten or twenty to twenty percent of the units will be, depending on size, will be affordable, so, so, so within that ten to twenty percent, where the, you know, the so-called new article, or the, the article that's going to be presented, is just really within that ten to twenty percent, it's just specifying more detail, but it seems like it's within the scope of, of the, you know, the general...
And that's why, that's why Town Council has, and the moderator have said it's...
Well, you know, I'll, I'll take a little exception, I'm not too trusting in Town Council, I'm not sure Mr. Bruce knows the, this is Mass. General Law, this is not town meeting law. It has to, you have to have exactly, on the warrant, exactly the way it's going into the book. Advertisement's a whole nother thing, but it has to be there, and that's what we have in front of us.
But there, there's, there's an interest of the public, there's, our function of the board, right, is to review and to update zoning. This is, you know, a huge potential addition, change to our bylaw, and to not give it a proper public hearing, I think, would be a disservice to the town.
Well, you know, it's not a, I'm going to stop you right there. I am doing what's in the law. A disservice would be to open this whole thing up and, and potentially taint what they want to do through Mass. General Laws.
How?
This is all we can deal with, right there. That's it.
What's the outcome if it was tainted, I mean?
If, what's the outcome of what?
What is the outcome if it is tainted, as you say, like, what, that means?
Well, if we entitate more, then someone could question, we're beyond the scope, we, the public hearing, what you gave us is not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay? Someone could claim, who doesn't like it, at town meeting could say they conducted an illegal public hearing.
So it invalidates the public hearing, you're saying?
Yeah, so you don't want that. What I'm trying to do, I'm trying to save it, if we just deal with this, you go on, do what you want, but if someone wants to challenge that, to say that we, we took beyond what was on here...
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that that person should take it up with Town Council then, because we're all here and ready and have gone through all of this to, to talk about it, and then I believe there's other people here, even beyond the WHP, who are here ready to talk about it as well, so.
You know, I understand numbers and everything, but I'm not, am I the bad guy? No, I'm the guy that's trying to do the thing right, and I don't believe Town Council gave it, or they weren't informed of the way Mass. General Law goes. This may be a great one that they could defend, but it doesn't go according to the, Mass. General Law is very specific, how many days the Selectmen got, how many days we got to publish it, how many, how many days it has to be in the paper, how many days within we have to conduct a hearing. That's all set by Mass. General Law, it isn't set by the local town.
Sure.
I have a question. Is this intended to be a change to the zoning bylaws? Or is it going into the town charter or the town bylaws, its equities?
It's the zoning bylaws, I believe.
Okay, 'cause looking at it, it's not identified really as such, it doesn't have a section number, it doesn't have the same numbering system as is required for the zoning bylaws, so identifying this and checking this doesn't do any good because it won't be the same thing.
Right, so we, what we got from the building, Building Department today was that it would be five I, capital I, is the correct place to put it.
Five, capital I?
Right now it says five X, right? So placeholder, it'll be five I.
Well, I will make a comment in that, and this is where I'm going to take my umpteen years on this. You can't have placeholders, and they can't put five X, the bill inspector, you have to be specific, you can't do it afterwards. So, you know, having a placeholder in the zoning, it has to be, it's a hundred percent, you voted one hundred percent. You can make changes if you had the article in front of us at town meeting floor, through substitute motions, or you can add that.
Yeah, I mean, if we had to do a substitute motion and change it from five X to five I, we could do that at town meeting.
That's, but what, what I'm saying is, that's where you can do those things, okay?
Right.
But you, you don't want to have...
I'm not going to debate five I or five X with you, I mean...
Yeah, you don't want to have placeholders, you can make those minor changes, but that is done, you can do that at town meeting, but...
Yeah.
I'm going back to where we stood, stand here.
So, Jack, could it be, though, that, so all this is saying is that, in the, the way it's written right now, is that the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws, to include inclusionary zoning bylaw. So within the scope of that, we're going to be talking about how that, how that amendment will be made, which is the, which is not, it doesn't even specify it, here it is, this was not intended to be, but to be inserted into the by, into the zoning bylaws. So it's, it seems to open up the door for having a discussion about the, the, you know, the proposed final language, fitting underneath this as being, you know, what we're amending it to. We could, we could almost vote on this Article fourteen with the spirit of knowing what the, what the proposed bylaw will be, and that's going to fit under this.
Sure, I mean, we're, I mean, we're prepared to, to talk about and have the open meeting tonight, or the, the discussion tonight, and if we feel that that may have validated at town meeting, then, I mean, we're willing to have it tonight and, and run that risk, I guess, if that's what you're asking.
If you, okay, if you go through what is being proposed, which I don't want to get into, they give specifics, but what it is, is, Phil, you're supposed to be able to come here and know what's up, if you remember the audience, it shouldn't be something that, yeah, this is what we think we're going to do, because if it's advertised, someone may go, eh, that doesn't bother me, but then in that whole text of a few pages, there's something they don't like. That's when they, they haven't been able to see that, so that's why the whole purpose of having these hearings is it has to be complete, ready to roll.
Although I may be missing something, but when I read Section Five, it just seems as you need to give the subject, you don't really need to give...
That's for advertisement.
Yeah, for advertisement.
That's a, this is, but this has nothing to do with advertisement. This is, this is, this is what's going in there.
I see.
Cut, paste, put it right in the zoning book. That's why the notice is different, we've got... We've got- we've had that before. We've had that even with notices on, what do you call it? Green cards. We've had to do that where something gets rezoned, so...
Mr. Chairman, is there time? Because we do meet before town meeting on the seventeenth. Is there time to properly advertise, in your view?
Well-
I mean, FinCom is supposed to meet, I think, also on that night, so, I mean, it's-
I can lay out the procedures.
Yeah.
Because the procedure's very simple. The Board of Selectmen hasn't taken a vote on it, so you guys have to do it because it's your article. So, that's step one. Then they'd have to give it to us, would be step two, and then we'd have to advertise. It has to be in the paper at least fourteen days.
I'm sorry, you're saying that you prefer that the Board of Selectmen vote on it prior to the planning board?
Do I? No, you have to. This is- this- you guys voted on this back in August, correct?
Yes.
You have- now have this.
Oh, you want us to vote on that?
No, I don't want you to. This is your article. You guys have to, to give it to us.
Yep.
I don't care whether- your members could not like it, but you have to give- you have to reopen the warrant to give it and say, "Yeah, put this on".
I- yeah.
That's a procedural thing, just like we do. We don't have to- we may vote to put it on, but members may not agree when we have the public hearing. The same thing with you guys. You guys would have to vote to put- to change your article-
Yeah.
-and give it to us.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Town Council's been involved every step of the way and hasn't talked about reopening the warrant and revoting and then having it back here and, you know...
Who are you dealing with?
We've just been moving it forward in the orderly fashion, talking to FinCom, coming to you, FinCom's next, Board of Selectmen. And there's people here who have read this, who are ready to speak to it, both WHP and elsewhere, so we're willing to do that.
But the point- my point is very simple. Once again, we keep going back to it, is did Town Council ever say anything about this public hearing?
We didn't ask them about the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you. So, per Mass General law, is your board required to vote on every zoning article?
Yes.
Prior to town meeting, okay? So, given that that is the only thing in front of you, but it's not the actual... So, the other boards that are the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, they're going to be voting on, as you say, spirit of the motion, on it's going to be the main motion by FinCom. But you're going to be voting on something else. If you're- if this is- if you're required, if there's not enough time to publicize this, all the boards are going to be voting on essentially a different article?
Correct. Now-
So, you have to vote on this tonight, so why are you asking us?
I'm just- I'm explaining it to you. What?
If it's Mass General law, then is- why is there a discussion about whether or not-
Well, when this first dropped in the other day, my assumption was what would have been done is we vote this and then you do what you guys want to do as a substitute motion. Okay? That's the way it can be done. Once it's published, once it's given to us-
Because it's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, it doesn't have to be a substitute motion. FinCom can accept the motion and make it the main motion. That's my understanding.
Now, once it's published and it's printed in the book, then you'd have to do a substitute- town meeting, you can come in here, Sarah, and change this all you want. We have to vote what's on here, okay? If you wanted to go to town meeting, you can change it if you want, but through a substitute motion.
Yeah, I mean, we're saying similar things in a different way.
No, you're not-
That's not my understanding.
That's the motion. It's not like the article and then the bylaw. It's the motion. That's what we said.
The motion should contain the bylaw, that the change is intended.
That's- it's not- there's no substitute motion going forward. That there is it.
The main motion. FinCom's motion becomes the main motion.
Which is fine.
There's no substitute motion.
Right, there's no-
That's fine. According to the-
An article and then a bylaw.
According to the motion, article as written, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws. There's no date in there. We'll amend them two years from now. That should satisfy the article then, right? If you've got to be specific, you don't have any information in here saying-
We've got to be a little bit rational and reasonable here, too. We're not-
Yeah.
I mean, this is how it's done at town meeting. You're not going to get it down to I's dotted and T's crossed and everything's picture perfect in the article. Some of them are, but a lot of them aren't.
And they should be.
And we've cho- well, maybe. I'd love it if that were the case, but with all the outreach and information gathering and discussions and input that we've pursued on this, it's brought us to this point. So, it was never going to be- you were never going to have it in the- I don't know if you want it on that one piece of paper. We put that together because it would accurately reflect the text of the bylaw. It's the motion. There is no substitute motion. That's the package.
I just think if we don't discuss and get feedback on what was given to us, we are abdicating our responsibility as the planning board. I think town meeting really looks to us for guidance on zoning, and if we just give it an up or down vote and not really discuss the details of it, I think we're not fulfilling our responsibility as planning board members.
Yeah, and I think this falls under- I think the other article is- falls under, from a discussion perspective, falls under the intent of Article fourteen as written. And is it possible that we can pass Article fourteen as it is, you know, depending on our discussion, knowing that it's the general form, but we still have the broader discussion of what is-
The chairman is going to rule that discussion out of order. He's not going to allow discussion on it, correct?
Okay. That's fine. I don't mind getting beat up because everybody here is trying to push this forward. I'm telling everybody the facts, the Mass General law facts and everything. If I went ahead and did it the way you want and it went down, I'd be the one being hung in effigy for doing that, okay? I'm explaining the laws. The laws are very clear. Been doing this a long time, and every article that comes in front of you, what you get here, that's why I did it, we'll go in the zoning book, boom. There's no adds to it, there's nothing afterward. The only way you can make adds to it, from us, I'm not saying at town meeting, is to do it yourself, like substitute motions, which has been done in the past. But we have to roll with what's here, that's all. Any discussions on what was given to us is outside, actually, the meeting, and we'd be discussing something that's not on the agenda, that's not even in front of us. That's the other problem. Okay, Form seven, Attorney General, Kate gave me-
I have to attach a copy of the ad.
Yep, and I'll read it here. Step one is date on which the proposed amendment was submitted to the Board of Selectmen, date on which Selectmen sent it to the planning board, which is August twenty-second. First notice the planning board was published nine eleven, second notice was published nine eighteen. Date on which the planning board posted conspicuous place in town hall is nine four. Date of which copy of notice was mailed to the Department of Housing and Community Development, nine seventeen, and it has to be ten days prior. Date on which copy notice was mailed to Regional Planning, nine seventeen. Date on which notice was mailed to planning boards of each town or city, nine seventeen. In cases of involuntary or boundary density use changes, which was mailed, yeah, to non-resident property, and it was not applicable. Date of planning board hearing must be within sixty-five days of date two, which was August twenty-second, in which we're meeting. And number eleven, planning board recommendations, okay, so... This, this everybody understands, this form goes Attorney General, this goes with it. And it'll also be what was given to us and what was voted on. So, this is how, very simply, the procedure is with the Attorney General, because this just doesn't start at town, it starts at the Attorney General. So, that's what we're dealing with. So, any- anything discussing what was given to us of recent, it goes on there. Whole thing goes.
Hi. My name is Andrew Flowers. I'm the vice chair of the Finance Committee, a member of the Housing Partnership Committee, and a precinct for RTM. I think I just wanted to provide comment about this broader discussion, which I know is the discussion before the discussion, about, just to make a point that we want to distinguish two different things. One is the expertise that this board has with Kate and the legal requirements from the state that Chairman Conroy has been speaking of about advertising zoning hearings. That's one thing I defer to this board as experts on that. I'm not talking about that. I just wanted to provide clarification about the town meeting process, the motion process, and the closing of the warrant, and the suggestion earlier of needing to reopen the warrant or that the exact article language of Article fourteen would be inserted into the bylaw, zoning bylaw. That's not the case. So, just to give an example, I think especially for the audience listening or in the audience here, right now, the fall town meeting warrant, to take an example, Article nine, it deals with OPEB, and it says to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum or sum of monies for the purpose of supplementing the fund known as the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, OPEB, as authorized by Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty of the Massachusetts General Laws, or take any action in relation thereto, petitioned by the Board of Selectmen. It's a very common article. We tend to invest money, every town meeting typically, in OPEB, OPEB. Now, does that article language specify the amount of money that's going into OPEB? No, it does not. Where does that number come from? It comes in the motion. So, being on the Finance Committee for over two years now, what we have is we have an important distinction here between articles and motion. What's on the article when it closes August twentieth is the article language. And for Article fourteen, the zoning bylaw in question here tonight, that article language is not what's going to go into the zoning bylaws. What's going to go into the zoning bylaws is the motion. Just as if, say, take Article three, which deals with the Fields Project. It's immeasurably complex. That motion has seventeen parts, I think. It specifies the origination of funds down to the decimal level, about where the money's going and how it's going to be spent. That's the motion, that's the detail. So, I just wanted to make a clarification here that when we talk about article language, that's- there will be no opening of the warrant by the Board of Selectmen. There will be no substitute motion. I mean, there may be, but there doesn't have to be, given the language that was provided to you. I know it was late. I know it was not with fourteen day notice, but I think to Phil's point, I would urge you all to see that the language of the zoning law at the state level that requires these public hearings, I don't know that language. I'm not a lawyer. But if Phil's point is right, that you advertise the article language, but the motions, the nitty-gritty details, is what you're here to discuss tonight. I would hope you would do that for Article fourteen. There's been an immeasurable amount of work that's gone into this. There's the five lines of text in the article language, and you have five pages of the motion language. And if you think you don't have enough time, that's on us, that's on Town Council, that's on others, so I'm not putting that on you. If you don't think you have enough time, then that's something we can discuss. But I just want to be clear here that the- what's going in the zoning bylaws or being proposed is the motion, not the article language. That's all.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Oh, you go ahead.
So, I'm ready to talk about it. I have notes. Upon notes, I talked to Andrew. I got some of my questions answered. There's a few hanging, so, you know, I was looking forward to discussing it. That being said, when you look at, and I've been a town meeting member for twenty-four years, so it's not a new process to me, when you look at what Kate has to submit, and when I know that from day one, when I got on this board, that I quickly learned that my opinion wasn't so important because everything we do seems to be bound by the law, and we have to look and look and see what it says. And even when we would like to vote a different way, sometimes we can't because if it's written down, we can't break that. I am very leery, and I don't want to say that because I have notes and notes, and I'd love to discuss it. I think a lot of the boards out there are able to have an opinion, a person- more of a personal opinion, and put their thoughts more into their decision. We have to scrutinize everything. We have to go by the bylaws. We have to. Because it seems that we're the board that is bound to do that. I would love to have more of an opinion more often because I'm very opinionated. But when I see what Kate passed down, and I'm looking over at it as Jack read it, that concerns me. I have been at town meeting. When they get up and say, "That's not what was presented", and things go south fast, and I think a lot of time and energy has been put into this, and it shouldn't go south fast. It should be looked at. I do not want to be cause for it to go south fast. I think that worries me, and that's why I paused, instead of pushing forward, which I was ready to do. I think that you still have the selectmen to discuss it publicly and people to weigh in and say what they think at the FinCom meeting, or, you know, if there's a public- if there's still at the point where there's public input. I think that those are the places where they don't have to pass that form in. They don't have to go by the letter. They can waver a little, and they can take this, ten pages, and go through it and discuss it, and the good points in it. I don't want to cause this to be thrown out for any reason. And that's why I am hesitant to go forward. Because as you all said, a lot of time has gone into it, a lot of, you know, it's important. It's not- it's not something that we should risk, is the way I'm looking at it. And like I said, I have plenty of discussion I would love to talk about, but I don't know that that's the right thing to do right now after listening to what just went on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Is it possible that we hold a public hearing the night of the first town meeting? Usually, we have a room held for any kind of leftover discussions or votes. Is that possible to hold a public hearing?
On the other pages?
Yeah, on the twenty-first.
We'll have to be- it has to be- we've got to go by the procedure.
Okay, so, um-
And everybody's got to understand, this is a procedure, and it wasn't flawed.
Right.
My-
So, I'm trying to find a way to follow the procedure.
The procedure's very simple.
Yeah.
They can't- the Housing Partnership can't give us an article. It's not allowed in the town charter or zoning. It's either Board of Selectmen, planning board, a zoning board, or private petition, so, and because-
It's from the Board of Selectmen.
What?
It's from the Board of Selectmen.
But the new one, it hasn't been given by the Board of Selectmen to vote, to send to us.
If the Board of Selectmen had voted on that, then could we have voted?
No, we'd still have to go- we'd have to re-advertise this.
If they had done it- if they had done it two weeks ago, the motion-
Yeah, and then we'd have to re-advertise, and you might have made the date.
If we had done it last night?
You would have given it to us, and you'd be two weeks out.
Now, let me ask you, if we voted on Article fourteen as written-
Yep.
And again, it's a- I look at it-
You couldn't still- if you vote-
I look at it as being a more of a-
We're going to have to do that, Phil.
Of a general, you know, it doesn't have all the specifics, but it has the intent of what, you know, what the Housing Partnership, what the Board of Selectmen are trying to do. And, you know, one scenario would be for us to vote on that, knowing that it will be more detailed, but we're voting on what's before us.
Correct.
And we're giving the Board of Selectmen, we're giving the town meeting, you know, our priority, our decision that we want to see inclusionary vote of housing go forward. So, maybe that's an option to try to vote.
But, I mean, the people on this board have expertise in zoning. We have experience in the Walpole zoning bylaw. We have experience in what kind of projects come before us, what kind of projects would be impacted, how they would be impacted. And so, if we just vote on this and we let FinCom and Board of Selectmen vote on the actual motion, okay, that's all well and good, but they don't have the expertise that we have. So, we're not giving town meeting, and we're not giving the citizens of Walpole what they deserve. I mean, I understand-
Because there's still room for-
The timing, but I just, even though there's public hearings, it's not public hearings before a planning board who is able to ask the kind of questions that Katie, you have, I'm sure, and to ask the kind of questions that I have. It's not the same.
But I would rather, unfortunately, I would rather pass that article and have everything be in order than open it up, dissect it, and risk that we're throwing the whole thing out and it won't be in order.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't it have been if we had just left it and not come before anybody and just introduced a substitute motion at town meeting, then there would have been none- and just introduced a substitute motion at town meeting, then there would have been none of this, right?
Yeah.
That's what I thought you were gonna do.
But we couldn't discuss the details.
That's what we don't wanna do. That's exactly why we've been through the wringer on all this stuff. And I realize what you're saying. I'm not arguing with you on that point. But that's exactly why we didn't do that, 'cause we wanna come before you, because we wanna go through all the processes. We spent like two and a half hours before FinCom the other night, not even for a vote, just for information purposes. That's, we don't wanna do the end around. We wanna go through everybody and have those discussions. So, that's all.
It says that the hearing has to be held within, the public hearing within sixty-five days after the proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw is submitted to the Planning Board by the City Council or Selectmen.
Yep.
So, there's a, there's a clock.
So, this is what they submitted to us.
Yeah, there's a clock. So, it sounds like part of the problem is because, because this is a zoning bylaw change, and it, and there are some specific requirements in the process as far as what needs to be submitted, but what has to, you know, what it is. You know, just reading Section five here, forty-eight, Section five. But maybe we need to do a compromise, or we need to, you know, so, so I think, I think one way or the other, we're gonna vote on something tonight because we're gonna be running into the sixty-five days.
Right. Okay, I'm, I'm looking for solutions. What if the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen held a joint meeting on their meeting on the fifteenth?
For what? To discuss the...
Vote on this article.
Once again, Sarah, it's Massachusetts laws. Okay, that's the way it is. The zoning's a very, very big deal in this state, and you'll be, and we can't go outside those. Okay? If we do, then the thing goes down. Then we've done, we've done a disservice to the applicants, or the sponsor, I should say. If we go off, if we go off the rails and entertain the other one, like I said, someone could challenge that, and we've done them a disservice. We can deal with what we have here, and we've done no disservice. It's a matter of, what has to happen is by the group to explain to the town meeting what happened. And let, and explain how, why it wasn't discussed here and why they're doing it the way they are.
Okay.
Okay, everybody understand that? No, no one? But, uh, I've been the bad guy before, but I would be the worst guy if I went ahead and kinda caved into this and did it because someone could challenge it, and it'd be, it'll be our fault for doing it, so, for conducting it outside of what was given to us. So, with that being said, anyone else have any questions, comments relative to what we have in front of us? And the reason I did this is, is the way it would appear in the zoning. Anybody? No? All right. Make a, a motion?
We, we can attempt to discuss what's in front of us.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we can have our discussion.
Yeah, well, anybody that can discuss what's here. All this in here. My thought is, they're gonna go with it. I don't have an issue with them going with it. So, anything we discuss here, maybe have already answered or something. I'm just, you know, I don't wanna have anything jeopardize their thing by talking about something outside of it if it's already written in here, already solved. That's the, that's my issue. I mean, if you wanna talk about, you know, everybody's welcome to talk about Article fourteen the way it's written. I don't have an issue with that. But any of my questions or comments relative to this may have already been solved and that, which probably they will be because this is such a small condensed little thing, so. And I don't wanna, like I said, question something, then that gets back on town meeting floor, and then they say, "Oh, here it is." So, and I don't wanna, my own personal, since they've gone through all the effort, and I don't wanna, you know, throw something out there that's, you know, kinda sticks when it shouldn't, so to speak, so. But however you wanna, we can, we should talk about it. If anybody wants to talk about Article fourteen as it's written, we'd ask you to. Anybody on the board?
I would like to.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I just wanna say, I wanna thank, you know, the Housing Partnership and, and, you know, the Board of Selectmen and all the people who've been working so hard on this, 'cause people have really given a lot of attention to this. This is the, the whole problem of affordable housing is such a critical problem to our town. You know, we know that one in three households right now are, are cost burden, paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing. One in ten of households are paying more than fifty percent on income in housing. So, housing is a problem not just for Walpole. It's a problem for eastern Massachusetts. And we, we, you know, as, and again, I won't, I won't go through all the things I was gonna say, but just, I'm gonna get to some very important points in a minute. Other than this, it also affects our economy, but more importantly, it affects who can live in Walpole. Our own residents cannot afford to live here. And, you know, there, there are, for, as people have seen in the presentations, know that right now, if you're, the average, the average median income of eighty-one thousand dollars is of, for a family of four, to be considered, I'm sorry, to be considered affordable, of a family of four can, would, would be still at the eighty-one thousand dollar range for the average median income, which shows you how challenging affordability is. Even eighty-one thousand dollars, that can be a challenge for, for a family of four. So, what we have before us, an Article fourteen, to me, sets a framework of how we can do inclusionary zoning. So, I just wanna discuss a couple of the items in there. So, the twenty, ten to twenty percent of the, of the units. If you'll look at what other towns have done, and I, I, you know, well, the discussions in the Housing Partnership and, and before the Finance Committee has been, is to come up with a table of, of how many units have to be affordable based on how many units in the development. And that, you know, as a way, one way to do that is to start off as six, any development more than six units, which it says here. One, one unit would be, I don't have a table, one unit would be, would be, have to be affordable, and then, and then it would be a, an increasing number depending upon the, the number of units built. So, so I really think that's an important part of this, is to have that, that number of units that are affordable depending on how many are built, and to balance that so that it, it incentivizes the developers as opposed to forty-B projects where they have to do twenty-five percent. And, and I think one way to, you know, structure this, and I'm gonna give congratulations to the, to the, to the Housing Partnership for coming together with, with a proposal like that. And then, the other, other aspect of this is providing developers with options if they don't wanna build affordable units. And again, there are many options that can be provided, and that, that comes into the, um, the Walpole Affordable Housing Trust, or the money would go into the General Fund if trust, that trust does not exist. But it's good to provide developers with those options that, 'cause again, the, the, the whole purpose here is to get affordable housing. And when developers choose to pay money into the trust, what that does is gives money that allows the town actually to build low-income housing, which is below the eighty percent income level, which we also have a need for in town. So, I just wanna speak in favor of Article fourteen.
What's in those sections?
We have a number of large developments that we know have gone into our town. A lot of people are asking, "Why are there no affordable units there?" There's no affordable units there because we never, we have not done inclusionary zoning. And the reason why this is coming together in such compressed time is because it's an urgency to get inclusionary zoning on our by, in our bylaws so that additional projects as they go forward, we catch them up front, and we do, we do get affordable housing out of it. So, and by, by doing inclusionary housing, we may not necessarily, it's not gonna solve, as Ben said, all of our, our housing, affordable housing crisis, you know, needs. But it will start addressing the amount of affordable housing we have. First, providing housing to people who need it, and also increasing our, that, our affordable housing so that we, we can, we can, for forty-B, we can, we can now control forty-B projects and make sure they're more friendly. So, that's getting to the, the, the housing, our, our, what do you call it, the housing?
Subsidized housing?
Yeah, subsidized housing inventory. So, so I just wanna speak in favor of this, and I would hope that maybe this board could vote for this, even though it may not be ideally all of the detail, but I think it gives the framework that gives the intention of what we wanna do, which is getting, having an inclusionary housing in our bylaws and doing it as soon as we can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just say a few things. I did have three pages of questions and comments that I will hold. I think many of us have seen several versions of this inclusionary zoning bylaw. And I let the Walpole Housing Partnership know that at the beginning, a few weeks ago, that I maybe not necessarily was in favor of it. I saw a lot of issues, and I wanted, I wanted it to be a very workable and good bylaw. You all have done an enormous amount of work, and I really appreciate it. We've gone back and forth, some of you individually, some as groups, and I really appreciate you trying to answer all my questions and really trying to make the bylaw the best that it can be. So, I do appreciate that. I did really wanna hear the answers to my questions, and I, I was assuming that the rest of the board also would come up with, you know, great questions, that we could really get this bylaw to, to great shape. So, that's not gonna happen. But I will say something that I was intending to say, and that the, the way, the, the motion exists, the, the one that we can't discuss, there's some good things to it, but it maybe has some things that are not quite the way that I want them to be. So, I am in favor of the intent, and I would be in favor of Article fourteen as we're considering it tonight here, this, this paragraph. But what I would suggest and what I would ask is for the Board of Selectmen to require, if, if inclusionary zoning passes in Walpole, to require the Walpole Housing Partnership appear before them, let's say, a year after the effective date, and hold a public hearing on, you know, how things are working. And, and I would ask that the Board of Selectmen ask the Walpole Housing Partnership to give them information on, you know, measurable results of what they found with the passage of inclusionary zoning, if it passes. Some things that I, I thought would be important to ask is how many, the number of affordable housing units created versus how many housing units total were created in the last year. I'd like to know the average time for the board review for a project that had to have a, that was required to have affordable housing versus the previous year when that was not required. This is a tough one, but some estimate of the funds expended by the town carrying out this inclusionary zoning, and any information if there were applicants that expressed interest in developing in Walpole, but then did not because of this bylaw. And I'd like to get feedback from, from all the applicants that go through the process of using the inclusionary zoning bylaw and just, you know, I don't know exactly which questions we could ask, but I think it's important to, to assess how the bylaw is working, how it's working for town boards, how it's working for developers, how it's working for the public. And I think a public hearing, you know, one year after the effective date of the passage, if it were to pass, would be a good way to assess that and, and then move forward with changes if they're needed. So, yeah, I'm in favor of the short article that we're considering. Thank you.
Okay. All right, turn over, I got a couple. Sorry, you just hit upon something. You talked about fees. Would you guys put a fee in there, or how's that gonna happen? Are you gonna let the special permit granting authority set the fee? That's all.
Sorry, Chairman, uh, sorry, Chairman Conroy. I think, could you repeat your question about fees?
Fees? I mean, Sarah hit upon what, you know, then all of a sudden it dawned on me. There's no fee schedule. Someone may ask at your hearing or at town meeting, what is the fee gonna be?
Should, it's, it's detailed in the five-page motion that we got yesterday, but am I allowed to discuss that, or no?
Well, I'm asking you a question. If it's in there, that's fine. I'm just, you've addressed it. That's all I'm asking.
Have we addressed the fee?
Yeah.
Not the fee in lieu of, the fee that the applicants pay.
Yeah, the money you give to the town when you write the check for the special permit.
Is that in the, the, the five pages of the...
No, no, you didn't have, not what...
Are we allowed to discuss that?
Yeah, because this is, I'm asking what in this is...
In that?
Yeah, this is in context of this.
There's nothing in that paragraph that says anything about fees.
No, but there's nothing, when I come in and I wanna file for this, is there, there's a fee schedule typically, you know, this for a special permit, this for various, this for this. You guys just gonna leave it up to the special permit granting authority?
Um, in the, in the text of the motion, that, that, if you'll allow me to discuss that, yes, the discretion is given to the special permit granting authority.
To, but they, you gotta, they gotta give a fee out. Is it gonna, the fee schedule itself, meaning like if you take a building permit, it's so much per thousand, you take this out. That's all I'm saying. It's a very minor thing. Someone may ask you that. Is it, you're gonna leave it up to the, the special permit authority to do it? Okay, that's simple. All right, one other one before you run away. You may not think I'm helping you, but consider this. What happens if this passes, but your trust doesn't? You gotta think about that. 'Cause that happens a lot with zoning. When you have one, what always happens is when you break up an article, and I've always warned people, I know you had to, 'cause this didn't go into the zoning book, but you, if you break them up, and one passes, one doesn't, you end up with...
That's a great question, Chairman Conroy, because it details Article fifteen, which is not as much a part of this hearing.
Yeah, but it's, I'm wrapping it.
But they're, they're entwined. You're absolutely right. They're, they're connected. What we heard in terms of, from Town Council and from Massachusetts Housing Partnership is that if fourteen passes and fifteen does not, in other words, you have an inclusionary zoning bylaw that raises money from payments in lieu, but you have nowhere to put it because you have not passed a housing trust in Article fifteen. What happens is it goes into the general fund. Exactly. So, that's, that's, that's part of the case here, is that you gotta be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. It's like, we wanna be able to enforce an inclusionary zoning bylaw, raise funds, or give developers the flexibility to pay, make payments in lieu if they don't wanna build the units, and we wanna create a housing trust, as many towns in Massachusetts have, and deploy that to increase affordable housing. But if that doesn't pass, then it just, we have to, we're at the mercy of the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator to budget that money back to us, so to speak. So, yeah, it's a good point. It's a great question.
But to continue on that, and I'll take a little further, is there anything in the housing trust, the way it's written, that if it doesn't pass, there's something within the Article fourteen, whatever it is here or the future, that will negate it? They're not tied like that, are they? No. You wanna keep them? So, the only thing you're worried about is the fee, the money. So, it wouldn't stop anybody. If fourteen went ahead, you could go ahead and do what you want. It's just a matter of, you can't get the money. That's all.
Well, we would probably try again next year.
No, I understand that, but what you don't wanna have is someone comes and do it, does affordable based upon fourteen or the future fourteen, and then all of a sudden, well, and then we're gonna answer the housing, oh, there is no housing trust. You don't want anything tied back to it.
Yeah, no, I don't.
You want them to run separate.
Yeah.
But how, and you're only talking about your money. Just...
Good question.
I would look just in case and ask somebody, 'cause you don't wanna have it so that someone may be ready to do it, and, "Oh, I can't because of trust, oh, and the special grant authority can't do it because there's no trust." Just look at that one.
It's a good question.
The trust language is actually statutory, so we didn't write that. We voted fourteen, but we basically didn't write fifteen, because essentially it was breaking by state law. So... So what Audrey had said, she's the attorney on the board, was that, that it would be fine, you know, because that's, because the trust just does what the state statute says and it doesn't actually, it's not tied to fourteen in any particular way.
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to, just if Article fourteen says, hey, you're going to go see the trust first and all of a sudden, what trust? And you're at a dead end.
Yeah, no, no, you don't, you don't need the trusts say so. So what the trust would do is once they got money, they would use it in whatever way to further affordable housing. They're not, the people who are paying into the trust aren't beholden to any requirement. The trust doesn't get to tell them what to do, if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
If someone just reads you the article or when it gets passed, is they don't want to have anything that says, uh, that you must have the Walpole Housing Partnership sign off before the application goes in. You don't want to have anything that stops, that you can't, that's all. Just make sure you got a clean, clean break. That's all I'm saying. Kate?
So I can't ask most of my questions. But I have voiced them and I think they've been heard. So I think my concerns have been listened to. The article we have before us, I am in favor of. I would urge maybe a few things to be looked at, and I think they already have or are, such as it mentions you can donate money or give land in lieu of. And I would think that that should be controlled by the board and not the person who is giving the land or the money. I think that's really important. So for example, if we have a, someone come before us and we have a peer review, they pay for the peer review, but we choose who does it. And I think that's important because it should be, it shouldn't be the person who owns the land and is going to make money off it that gets to choose who's going to evaluate it. I also think it should be considered that if, on the same path, how those appraisals would be addressed. So for example, if you had three appraisals, are you going to take the average? Are you going to take the middle? Not, not averaging it out, just take the middle. I think those are things that have to be, and I'm not necessarily saying you can put them in here for a town meeting, but these are things that are important and concerned me. I had voiced before, and I know there's legality with it. I would love to see existing residency somehow considered for these units. Not blocking out outsiders, but it would be nice if someone who's lived there for, here for X number of years, not forever, but for, you know, someone who's been here and established could have preference, I think, or consideration. I understand it's complicated, but, um, and I think all my other questions would be out of order. So I say thank you for the energy you put in and the time. And if you could just keep in mind those issues I had, those questions that I voiced, Andrew could share some of them with you. I think I'd appreciate it.
John?
I'd just like to say, I think you've done a lot in a fairly short period of time, so I'm impressed with that. And you've come to a point where we're trying to get this in in time. It may not work. I think there are some questions I have which may be addressed in the future version of this. One issue in particular I have is the options given to the developers who are not providing affordable, um, units. The idea of allowing them options to do away with what the objective is really to get the affordable housing on the ground. I have problems with that. If it can be addressed in such a way, like Kate has mentioned, there may be, we can restrict it in such a way that will in fact work. Fifteen is kind of outside the scope, but I have issues with that, but that's not for us. I think the general wording of it has been done good, well. I have issues on the percentages somewhat, but we'll see how that turns out with the final version. The idea that everything's restricted in perpetuity, although perpetuity is a vague word in some cases in the state's legal definitions. I think in the general matter, it's a good idea and you're going in the right direction. It's just a question of dotting the i's and crossing the t's to make sure everything will work. And if it is going into the zoning law, make it in a format that's going to be compatible to the zoning bylaw, the remaining zoning bylaws. One other thing, a lot of times when you're adding something new, it's the links between sections of the bylaws you have to watch out for, how one might affect another. It may be something to look at, see if the, if the changes do alter anything unintentional. Thanks.
So I do have some comments back about the, um-
Can you come to the microphone, Willa, if you want?
I think Joe was waiting to speak.
Oh, yeah.
We have our chairman's.
No, he's standing up, stretching. Go ahead. Oh, you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you standing up.
Mr. Chairman, is it the board's intention to vote on what was published after the public hearing has been closed?
To vote this? Yeah, we have to.
So you have basically-
And let me say this, Joe, we don't have to. We get sixty-five days. We could go beyond it. But our intent is to put it for vote tonight.
So what you have before you is not the version that the Housing Partnership Committee is recommending now. And it probably won't be the version that the Board of Selectmen really wants. So you have basically three votes. And a yes you can vote at, which I don't think that's going to happen. Then you can vote no, which is a possibility. But I would urge the board to remand it back to the Board of Selectmen. And let the Board of Selectmen substitute a mo-, present a substitute motion at town meeting, which includes the new version. I think that's a lot cleaner and it also allows the planning board to explain more completely to town meeting why you would remand it back as opposed to have possibly a divided yes-no vote on the board as to what you are voting on now. So it obviously is, what you have before you is not as complete as what the Housing Partnership is now submitting. I have a lot of questions myself on what they're submitting and I would like to, myself, work with them further on some ideas which may be considered by the Board of Selectmen. But clearly what you have in front of you is just not as complete as it should be. And remanding it back to committee might be a nicer way of telling town meeting that you, the predicament that you were in as a result of mass general laws.
Hi, so I'm Willa Bandler. I'm a member of the Housing Partnership. So I just wanted to speak, John, to your points about, well, I mean, you know, some, you had also raised questions about letting the developer choose whether to do the payment in lieu or provide the units.
My question wasn't that. My question was, not to interrupt you, my question was if it's decided, when an evaluation has to occur, that was my issue. When the evaluation has to occur, it should be, the person who does the evaluation should be determined by the governing board, not the person-
No, I heard that. I thought you also said about the developer choosing which option, but maybe I misheard you. Anyway, but so I think, so one thing that we had talked about, and this is both in reviewing other tent, like, so like towns like Mansfield and Yarmouth that have bylaws that mostly seem to work pretty well. And, you know, in talking to, for instance, I spent a long time talking to the planner from Easton, who said that really, like, that having the payment in lieu is a good thing because it prevents developers from being completely unable to develop their property in certain cases. But that what you really want is for them to provide the housing. Like, you, you don't want them to just be like, oh, you could do, you could do the payment in lieu or you could do the housing. It's, you know, about equal. You really want it to be easier for them to provide the housing, you know, cheaper than, than to do the payment in lieu, which we think is how we have it set up, although of course, you know, we'll see what actually happens after a year or whatever, but, um, assuming it passes. But that it is, so we, we want it to be more attractive for them to provide the housing, but we also don't want to get in a situation where, you know, in kind of responding to some of the people that had showed up at some of our, you know, forums that we've held for the public, that we had people who were like, well, but then you're taking something from a private property owner. Like, if you make it so that, for instance, like, let's say someone wants to do six units and they can only do six units even with the, you know, moderate amount of density bonus that we're allowing, they, they're really just not, there's no way of getting a seventh unit onto that lot in a way that, that will satisfy everything else that they need to do. Then they have two choices. If we don't provide the payment in lieu, they have two choices. They can either only build five units, which is a huge hit to their bottom line because then they're foregoing the profit from one whole market rate unit. Or they can find some way of making it so that they can get seven units on that lot in a way that like it might, you know, compromise the project in some other way. Or they can just not develop the project at all and leave Walpole. And like, we don't want to be in a position where property owners feel that they can't make their projects work out in a way that, like, they have to make some profit. You know, the, the goal is to have developers partially subsidize some affordable housing. It takes the pressure off everybody else to subsidize affordable housing if the developers put some of their profit into it. But we don't want to make it impossible. So like, I think that was the, like, the goal in letting them choose was that we would make it so that ideally, under most circumstances, it would be more attractive for them to choose the thing we want them to choose. But that if that, for some reason that we can't foresee, it just isn't going to happen, that they do have the choice. They don't have to ask us for permission to do the thing that will make their project work. I don't know if that clarified that up.
Well, I, I think I understand the, the idea behind what they're looking at. But are there affordable units? Are they building them at undercost then? They're not making anything on their affordable units?
Oh, no, they are making some, but it's just a question of like, you know, so it cuts into their, generally-
Yeah, so it'll cut into their profit, yeah.
You know, you need a certain number of market rate units to subsidize each affordable unit. And so if you're in a position where, that's why I chose kind of the smallest example is like, let's say the six units and you just can't accommodate one more unit on that lot. One thing that, you know, like, there are also the, like, you know, you could build the affordable units elsewhere. Sometimes like Mansfield does that.
And that's reasonable, I think, too.
We don't love that.
The idea of getting the affordable unit built and not just having the money sit-
Moving on.
Well, we, so there are a few reasons that we don't love that. One of them is that the goal of this whole project in, you know, and in other towns and throughout the state is to get those affordable units integrated into market rate development and not have all the affordable units in one neighborhood. That that has a lot of, of adverse consequences that we don't like. You know, so that's, that's one part of it. And then the other thing is that the money that goes into the affordable housing trust, can be used in different ways. Like, for instance, developers are probably only going to, for the most part, provide units that are affordable to someone making eighty percent AMI. But as Phil had mentioned, eighty percent AMI is a lot. So that's not really, when people think affordable housing, that's not terribly affordable. So with the money in a housing trust, we could, for instance, in a future project, use that money to help out a developer to further subsidize a unit to make it affordable to someone at fifty percent AMI. Right, we're not talking about having enough money in the housing trust to go off and build town-owned affordable housing. We're never going to get there. We're not going to have that much money in it. We're going to have enough money to help a future developer do a thing that we want, is the idea with that. So, you know, we could actually get things that we want more if we have the money eventually.
Based on your research, have you any feeling as to how much time, like, the money sits in the trust and how often they, how quickly they put it back into circulation, you might say?
I, I, I can't, I'm not sure that I can summarize that. I could-
I think we can't talk about the trust, really.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, but I, I mean, even if we were going to talk about the trust, I'm not sure that I have enough data points that I could say usually, you know. It, you know, but it is a slow process. It's not something where like overnight, we're going to have hundreds of thousands of dollars and do whatever we want with it. That's not how that's going to work. It's really more just to give us a little bit of flexibility to kind of have some more control, you know, to have the town have more control over what kind of housing gets built and where and how and for whom.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone?
I want to say one thing. Hi, Mr. Chairman, Liz Pharaohs. I'm NRTM Precinct One, also a member of the Walpole Housing Partnership Committee. I'll be very brief since we, I understand and appreciate that you can only vote based upon the four or so sentences that are in the article presented to you. It seems from your comments that you can agree with us that there is most definitely a need to address the problem that the town has. And you all, you seem to agree with that statement that there is a problem and a solution needs to be found. So I would ask that, um, I guess, um, since it is so generic, if you can vote on, on that, that, um, that yes, that something needs to be done. There's no possible way that all of your questions could be answered in four sentences. That's just, and I would hope that you wouldn't vote no because of the lack of information in that, in that one paragraph. And rather than what Joe suggested, you know, remanding it back, I'm just hopeful that you-
But what Joe suggested, though, might not be a bad idea. And the reason I say that is if the vote were split and it goes to town meeting, it leaves question, the vote is split. If it's remanded back, it's a general explanation of why it was remanded back in that town council did not return the edited version until, what was it, a day before the hearing, two days? And it's not, it doesn't look questionable or sketchy to anyone at town meeting. It looks clean and clear that it was just a simple reason of it couldn't be reviewed. Whereas in my opinion, if the vote ended up split, it leaves question in some people's mind as to why it really was split. So to remand it back isn't a mark on you guys.
Oh, I don't think that. And I, and I-
It might be beneficial, is what I'm thinking, because it looks more credible and clean. And I think that's what Joe's trying to say.
Oh, I appreciate it. And I, and I get exactly what he's trying to say. I'm just, in the off chance, it kind of sounded like three of you were willing to vote yes on this. If the other two could possibly abstain, if they really couldn't give it a yes, that would also send a message that, you know, you're abstaining just because there wasn't enough information available to you to make a yes vote. I don't know, just to consider. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So, so everybody that stands, all we have is recommending board to the town meeting. And we've seen in the past, we've voted for something, five-zero, and it goes down. I see stuff where we've had a split vote and it goes through. So it doesn't, I, sometimes I don't think it really matters how our vote ends up. I know everybody wants a fair rule, no matter where you go. All right, so my thought before I make, make the motion is if you vote, an affirmative vote for this article where it's written means you are supporting this article. This here. A no means you're not supporting this article, but what are you supporting? Are you, because you want the other one? And if you have an abstaining because you don't want to go one way or another, then to me, I think that's a little more cleaner. I don't know if that makes sense to anybody.
How about a remand? No.
I think it's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea.
Or we could go with a remand. So, but what I'm saying is, just, so everybody, at least in my mind, if you vote for this, someone could say, oh yeah, this is all they want. They didn't want the next one that we know is going to come up. If they voted no, well, they didn't want this, but they didn't say- If they voted no, well, they didn't want this, but they didn't say no against the bigger one.
But I don't think that will be clear at town meeting.
I know, none of this will be clear, that's.
And that's why I think if we remanded, it's clear that we weren't.
We wanted additional information.
We were. Yeah, it was just we couldn't vote on what was.
You didn't have the all the information in front of us.
What was in front of us wasn't, we knew what was in front of us wasn't the proper. That's why I think it's much better that way. I think it supports, I think it gives them more support than either voting yes. If you vote yes, you're voting against the new one. If you vote no, it looks like we don't support them. And if you abstain, I feel it looks like we don't support them. I like the remand because I feel it looks like, we're listening to them. We are, we didn't have what we could vote for. I think it's it's much more in support of them than any of the other three options.
What are the what are the legal ramifications if we remanded back to the selectmen? Can they introduce the same article in next spring?
No, we have no.
Selectmen.
Our vote means nothing, nothing. It's just no different than the capital budget or, you know, the the dog.
Oh, no, it doesn't. Doesn't.
It's just us.
It's 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 more keeping it clean and not marking it on them. I think by doing, I think by doing the other votes, we're marking it on them. We're leaving a question in people's minds.
That we have issues.
Unless, you know what I mean? I just think a remand is going to make it clear and clean. And it we can, selectmen or us, so us can even get up and say, we voted to remand because we didn't have, you know, the information came in too late for us to be legally allowed to review. That way, it doesn't mark their effort.
Now, you could look at this another way, and that is that all we're voting we're voting for is some, you know, general, law, some general bylaw to do inclusionary zoning, and the the essence of what, you know, we're looking for is in here. It's not as detailed, obviously, as it needs to be to be effective, but the the, I think the major components are here. And um you know, we're, that that way we can move this forward. I think there's a danger of remanding it, you know, I'm not sure.
I don't think it would, I don't think it would keep it from moving forward, because the selectmen are gonna move it forward. What we're doing is we're putting it back in the selectmen so they can legitimize the new version. We're giving them the opportunity to.
Uh with it, we.
At town meeting, it could be questioned, why are we, why did they vote on two different things? I just think it's gonna muddle the puddle. I think it's going to make it.
I I think there was a recognition when this was, you know, done by the Board of Selectmen, that this was uh, um something they wanted to get into war, knowing that they would do a, you know, working with the Housing Partnership.
I know, but it didn't work, Phil. It it and it wasn't their fault. It didn't, it didn't work timing wise. I understand their intent, and I understand the 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 group's intent, and that's what I think. I'm just trying to salvage.
So if we do remand it, we won't get another vote on this ourselves.
Correct.
Before, you know, that we would have been vote by the planning board before town meeting, because there's not enough time to the, you know, the public notice. So I would, you know, I would still advocate doing the vote, and I intend to vote yes if we did that.
So you might risk a successful vote if you do that, though, and I think that's why a remand's a good idea.
Because the question will come up.
It will come up.
Is if you voted one way or another, yes, no, or abstain, then you get into the mu- the muddled puddle, as you said.
And those people who aren't in support of it will make sure it comes up and they'll make sure that it looks questionable.
But if it's in, when it's asked, why was it remanded, we can answer very honestly is because the fact that they come up with something different and they were gonna do it, but we legally, we couldn't vote on that. So you haven't, you explain what happened.
But you haven't given any opinion on whether you think the planning board should support inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, but it's better. It's better to give no opinion than to make it look questionable.
Very fact.
I think if we make it look questionable, it with these with these zoning, articles, it's so, people get their backs up on them, and I just think that rather than, I don't want to mark it in any way. I think it'll look questionable. I think by remanding it, all we're saying is we couldn't review it. That way, we are not saying we're in any way against it. And if we, someone's going to say, why did you vote differently than they voted? Well, then, did you really? And then it's gonna become a big.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know. I just think it's messy when it.
Okay.
The point is, several of the board members have made a point that they have questions that they would have liked to have been able to ask. And without asking the questions, how can, and finding an answer, how can we honestly say we're supporting it or we're not supporting it?
Sorry.
Uh just uh Mr. Maraski and the, audience was making motions. Just trying to call your attention to that.
He was, or was he like choking or? He seems to be engaged.
Now, now he's in a conversation, so never mind.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Well, Joe was flapping around, and Sarah said, we're not sure whether he needed mouth to mouth or.
I was helping him out.
You'd be the one that won't believe me.
So so I just wanted to to say, I I it's up to you to decide whether you want to vote remand back to the committee, or vote yes or no. Um the two points I want to make are, when the Board of Selectmen does take this up, and they're the sponsor of this article, I believe, on October fifteenth, and vote on it, there's nothing stopping you all. I would encourage you all individually, as planning board members, to go and give your thoughts on the detailed motion that you received yesterday to the Board of Selectmen, so that we still, because what I, the point, the the reason I bring this up is, we we want to utilize your expertise. And the town needs your expertise and thoughts, good or bad. And so I know we can't speak to the detailed motion that we presented, that we uh finished, but we can only vote on, you can only vote on the article that was advertised, for this public hearing, I get that. But so nu- number one of my two points is, please do give your input to the Board of Selectmen. My second point is, I would encourage you to take a yes-no vote, and I know that's scary, because to to Katie's point, absolutely, there's gonna be questions at town meeting about, well, this wasn't, they voted on something else, and and that's gonna cause confusion. But let's take a step back here. There's three hundred units on Summer Street coming, likely, in two forty B developments. Boydin School was packed last night. There is an incredible, amount of frustration in this town about the lack of affordable housing and the consequences of the lack of affordable housing, namely, the loss of zoning control and the and the hits of forty Bs. So even though you're only voting on those four sentences tonight, if you were, it's up to you, I I respect you either way, but if you were to vote yes/no, you're sending a signal about your broader thoughts of inclusionary zoning, and that matters a lot, again, because of your expertise. So that's all I'll say. Um and we'll work with you going forward to tonight to to get your input that you presented earlier.
Wouldn't you rather, though, Andrew, wouldn't you rather it go in clean? Wouldn't you rather it go in? So if it's remanded back, it goes in clean, there's no question. Nobody can stand up and say, this is out of order, they looked at, they voted on that, you voted on something else. Nobody can rock the boat. Nobody can question the validity of things. That there's two different points of information that are being voted, but yet it's being presented as one at town meeting. I think it's so much better to go in clean. When you're remanding back to committee, it's not an opinion against the article in any way.
So Katie, another way of looking at this might be that they're not really two different articles, that that this is a more general, description or definition of what we would want an inclusionary zone by law to look like. And the the motion that's gonna be, you know, presented by the Board of, or by the planning committee, um takes this and and drills down and really provides all the detail. So I don't look at it being two different contrary articles. I look at it, that this is.
One's a summary, one's the specifics. I was like, summary.
I I think it's important for the planning board to make a statement towards inclusionary housing. That's that's.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for favorable action.
Second.
On Article fourteen.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Phil.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Abstain.
So we get two zero three. We get no no votes. Come on. So, okay. To your town meeting.
Two yes. Three, yeah.
All right. Next up.
I wish they would put a.
There it is. Ah, A and R Winter. Let's start that one out. A and R Winter, Plan of Land Winter Streets. And. Owners, John and June, oh Johnny, oh John Lee, okay.
I'm assuming it's not the same John.
No, it's John Lee the plumber. Now. This is confusing. What the hell did they do? Kyle, what did they do? I'm sorry, I should give everybody.
They're basically rounding this.
Oh, he's just doing that little piece?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
There are a couple of laws, actually explained up in the notes, that they're doing some manipulating of of the lots, probably for things to come in the future. Um but I took a quick look at it, and it's uh, each, you know, there's some trading between this parcel and the larger parcel, um to accommodate this corner and then shift the area back to two fifteen Winter Streets or it remains conforming.
Oh, okay. That's it?
So everything seems to be there.
They're swapping land, basically.
Yeah, so he's, yeah, okay, so he already has the front. Did you, this, he hasn't changed anything?
Correct.
So anyways, okay. All these WF points, what's that, Kyle?
Wetland flags.
Okay, well, that's what I thought, and I'm saying, I don't know how you're gonna do it unless he flies over, but.
Do we know how close this is or?
What what is WF?
Between the seven leagues.
A wetland, wetland flag, that's what I kind of thought it was. So if you're gonna develop this, you're gonna be right in the swamp.
Uh no, well, we could scale it. Oh.
I don't know if you know where this is on Winter. If you're coming from somewhere.
Right in his back pocket.
Right as you start to make the turn before Notch Road. John Lee's house, and it kind of goes down, and it's all part of the old, like Cedar Swamp and stuff.
Let's see, so.
It's.
So it's not really buildable?
No, not really. So we'll go to the, we'll go to the proposed line.
Look at his house, it just, this drops right off. Let's see, did he, yeah, he gave a look.
Close, it's on around fifteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they're obviously near its main street, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, could you just summarize what, so exactly what the A and R, what they're asking?
Yeah, I didn't know, it's right here, Sarah. All he's doing is this little piece. He's just trying to square off his.
They explain it up here in this note.
Yeah, the note up there.
So the current lot is configured like this.
Uh huh.
You can see the locals.
They want, so so this piece is going to go to the bigger parcel.
Okay.
And then there's a sliver, this outer sliver is going to go with two fifteen Winter.
I see.
To compensate for the lost area.
Okay.
What is it, what is that doing? I know it's it's legal, but what is it doing for him, Kyle, do you know?
I think they have plans for future development out here.
But what does it do for?
So it doesn't, I don't know that it does anything for number two fifteen, but I think it puts the larger parcel in configuration where they could do something with it in the future.
Is it just so they can make the road bend easier?
The corner of a road or something like that. Oh, okay, which they could do with, yeah, okay. So they're, okay, they were.
I think the round and the corner is allowed to go. Explain to me, Mr. Chairman, when it was brought in.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not germane to uh what we do, but I'm just curious, because when you see a big plan like this, I'm looking all over the place. It's going on, it's only this little thing.
Right, I was particularly pleased with the plan, because of the note does explain what's going on. It makes it very easy to understand.
Yeah.
If you're used to looking at plans doing odd things.
We won't say who did it and give them any thumbs up, because you're starting to get a big head. Okay.
So we just signed the.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to endorse an A and R.
Second.
Second.
Phil's got it.
Second, all of the favor?
Aye.
All right, just all we did was sign the that.
Yeah.
Do my line. You can stamp it, you're not, you're not there.
Oh, is that the stamp册's not necessarily.
Correct.
I think it's actually on there.
Is it?
Is it on there?
But there no determination for zoning?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
Wow.
Not a determination, it's a conformity.
Did you make them do it or?
Don't was there when it came.
Get them all to do that.
I looked at it at the other.
Wait.
See, I'm nervous.
I don't wanna, I'll get you a pen. Do you want this one or?
Yeah, Jack, you can ask your lead that.
I don't know, when I saw Phil's and Sarah's, yeah, I put my name there, but.
Do you normally sign or just put initials?
No, I sign, but you can kind of read my name.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yours, eh, Sarah's no way.
What? What'd you say?
You sound like a doctor.
What?
Can't read, can't read your signature.
I know it doesn't matter, because you'd attest to that, but.
You're making it too easy for your kids.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't value anything, I text everything.
Uh, A and R, so. Okay. We're gonna talk about consultants. Is everybody ready to talk about that or? All right, everybody ready to discuss what we're going to try to accommodate, what we want to do? Is the, I don't even know, what's the new, be politically correct, what's the new person, not to say what's the new girl, what's her name, Kyle?
Uh uh it's Ashley Clark.
Okay, Ashley Clark, and her title is, I don't even think we got a description. That was one of the things we never did get of her job.
We got that.
Oh, we did.
Oh, we did? Okay. Sue or something or?
But the idea was she wasn't going to do much.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why this come about. And consultant, okay?
With with us.
And what we were, have been missing is, when we had, had various people, when you had a planner, it was a little different, but when we went with, under our control, but then what happened when the planner became part of the selectmen, naturally, it becomes another worker bee for, administration, so we get put on the back burner and that. So it was getting hard to get some of the stuff done that we needed. And not necessarily the the stuff that I think we've all wrestled with, I know that Sarah does and Kate and, well, Joe's gone. But this is the person who's gonna hopefully take care of all the little items that should be on the plan. Little, make sure, do they got enough plans? Is the scale right? Uh spelling too, but everything going through the by, there's a checklist of what they're supposed to present, and that's all we're looking for from this. Not necessarily like a planner would be when when they say, are they protecting uh, like a subdivision control, any historic things. That's not necessarily him. This is the nuts and bolts guy. And hopefully that Ashley can weigh in on some of the other stuff. And what I found out is Foxborough uses, they have a planner, but they also use one of these, the consultant, actually the BSC Group, to do their review, and they just go down, and all it is is, in the world of construction, I call it shop drawings, review, you just go down, make sure, okay, you're supposed to have six copies, you've got those, does he got the right scale? Does he show everything he's supposed to? Does he got, does he got the drainage study? Does he, it's just, item by item, and then he'll review it to see that it, if it is um complete enough, that you could make sense out of it and to look at it like that. And that's what, you know, it's kind of where Kyle's job as a town engineer is to look at it from a design standpoint, correct? You don't care how many copies they give, as long as you get your copy.
Right, I don't see that as a rule.
Yeah, and you don't see that uh they put the right scale. You may pick it up, but, but your job is strictly from the civil engineering perspective, uh hopefully some Ashley will, if we have some stuff to go with um, just the, what do you call it, the, not the necessarily technical stuff, but looking at the whole, whole.
Like the master plan issues?
Yes, 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 exactly. And this is the one that says, yep, everything's complete, he's done it back, he's done it right, or they go, no, this is missing, and they gotta get it. or they go, no, this is missing, and they gotta get it, 'cause one of the things I think we all get frustrated on, anybody's been sitting here, is they don't submit everything at once, and it's like, we're sitting here without a drainage report, we're sitting out here without, uh, like, they're supposed to have a traffic. So this is what this person is supposed to do for us, to, to do the whole checklist, Kate has hers, she, uh, stamps it in and records it, but from there on, open up the subdivision control book, or the zoning book, whatever it is, and go item by item by item by item to make sure, and because they are an engineer firm, they would have the ability to speak, meaning they carry the PE behind them saying, eh, nah, this isn't gonna do it, you need some more. So that's, and when I heard that Foxborough did it, I said, huh, that's interesting, and I will, and the reason I heard Foxborough did it is because my brother-in-law is on the Foxborough planning board, and I asked him, do you guys use a consultant? He says, yeah, and the consultant they use is the BSC group, that's what they're doing. I'm a little familiar with Beals and Thomas, and professional consulting service is actually out of Foxborough, but I don't believe they're used by them, and I will.
Well, I think one issue might be, I think one of the members of this is on the Foxborough planning board. That's probably why they aren't using us as a consultant.
Yeah, the other reason.
So, Jack, I just have two quick questions.
Yeah, sure, Phil.
One is, so, um, so we're not really looking for an engineer, we're looking for more of a staff person, then? And there's, you know, like a civil engineering support staff?
Cool, yeah, this is.
Is that, I'm just looking for what?
In, in my, in my business, in construction, you have to do, when you get a job, they call them sharp draws, so you have to make sure you submit the right number, well, Sarah, you're familiar with this, you have to, all the i's and d's and t's are crossed, and they get everything they're supposed to have, and the problem we're getting here is, a hearing of a one, because they didn't submit this, they shouldn't, and a lot of ours are continuing, just because they didn't submit what they should've, or, and, you know, I can judge it from Sarah's stuff, I know Kate does it, and even Joe's, we were actually doing this work, and that's what I'm trying to, and, I don't wanna do it, I'm sure you don't wanna do it, is you're going through, and you had to pick up, because you know, you didn't have people picking up, because there was no one to do that.
Right.
So we were actually playing this, not necessarily, we had Maggie, and not necessarily, we don't do the drainage stuff, but, uh, we had to make sure that it got done right, and we had one instance where they had the wrong name of the town on there, so it's just that stuff, Phil, to make the process go better for us.
Yeah, but it would be on the lower end than.
Yeah, yeah, we're not asking for the senior staff, yeah, if, if you need it, we would go with it, but not. And the other thing, right now, our fee schedule is based upon a full-time planner, and that's how they're all set up initially on subdivisions. Now, the other thing is, Jim had said, oh, maybe you wanna consider different fee schedules for site plans, well, once upon a time, we're supposed to be business friendly, and we made site plans real cheap for commercials, so, but, and actually, site plan might be a little simpler than most, than doing a whole subdivision, but that's, we can address that after. So what, the intent of this is looking for who we think could do the best. Now, um, since John picked it up, I thought John was gonna pick up the rest of it, but I wouldn't want that guy on the Foxborough professional, 'cause, 'cause he's my brother-in-law, that's the guy who picked it up from, he, John works for these guys, and he's the one, like, who gave me the BSC, so, you know, I'd have to, I think abstain, of course, there might be fights when I don't agree with them.
Abstain from everything, I mean, you can't do that.
We don't need more fights.
Or I get John finally and have fun at him, and like, say, what are you doing?
Kyle, have you dealt with any of these guys?
Um, I have, um, and, and if you will.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, Kyle, I mean.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
A couple of things, a long involvement with site plan and, uh, planning board and subdivisions, whatnot, um, two things, well, all these firms have a lot of horsepower, they offer a wide variety of, of staff, um, this might seem a little heavy for administrative review, but, um, I like the idea of the board having a relationship, um, with a firm that aren't slangs like that, and said, you never know when you're gonna need to go off for more things, and I think any of them could offer that. Um, the second thing is very, uh, familiar, I didn't, I wasn't familiar with the firm from Foxborough, I think professional consultants, um, but I looked over their proposal, um, I think the first night that I came here, and I was impressed with it. And the second thing is very simple, and it's logistics, they're close by, they're easily able to come over here, there's not a lot of travel time to do these things, um, so, you know, when I looked out of those three, I was, I was very impressed with their proposal.
Have you had any dealings with Beals and Thomas or, um, BSC?
Not with BSC, but, uh, Beals and Thomas frequently provided submissions to the, uh, community for which I prior worked, um, and, uh, you know, I've had lots of contact with them over the years, but not in a review capacity, we were reviewing their work as, as proponents for development, um, but in general, I found them to do a very good job, and they actually, um, Beals reviewed for the community I worked for before, um, to some extent. So, um, I have good thing, you know, I have good reports out of what they can do as well.
Jack, did you say you had dealt?
Uh, just from doing my business, Beal and Thomas, I see a lot on it, BSC, I've heard of it, but not, never on my plans. These guys, my brother-in-law, they do, they're not into the design like the Glosses, the Americans of the world. Um, I assume because they all answered what went out, that no one have a problem with doing it as conflict, because I don't think any of these guys ever been in front of us, but one of the things you wouldn't wanna do is be our little consultant for ten grand a year, but they're missing out on a big, huge subdivision, so I think by them putting it in, I don't think we have an issue with that. Um, now, Sarah, you mentioned something that you'd like to talk, do you still want it?
Well, I just said, I mean, it would be difficult for me to choose one over the other, without, you know, talking with somebody, just from, from seeing their submission, um, but can I ask a related question?
Yeah.
Um, back when, uh, John Charbonneau was here, he, he mentioned that he wanted to give the board the submission from the applicants, at the same time, we send it out to sewer water and whatever, so that we have more time to review it. Is that something that we can discuss as a board, maybe in relation to this, like?
We were doing that with Joe, we did that for a while when Joe wanted, and went out, and one of the things that happened, people would lose it, 'cause we had some hearings, if it gets filed, a lot of these are like, two months away.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not an issue, I mean, if you wanna do that, but.
I mean, I, I think, just, I wanted to get the opinion of the board, because some, you know, sometimes they trickle in, and then, you know, it's like, two days before the hearing, it's like, here, don't forget, review this before, which, I mean, maybe this consultant can help, because if they, if they send, if these are the first people that look at it, and they say, look, you don't have this, this, or this.
Yep.
Then maybe we have more teeth to, to say, 'cause a lot of tenants were like, okay, we'll look at it.
I also think it's going to, so the reason it's so hard getting it late is because you do have to nitpick it, and if, I, I, it would be great to get it earlier, but what I'm saying is, I think maybe we won't need, you know.
That, if these guys take a look at it first.
Because if they do the nitpicking.
Well, on the same, I'm going the same with you guys right now, meaning that, if, let's face it, you're gonna get it, say, a month and a half, where'd I put that? And I'm not even gonna open it myself that early, 'cause I'm gonna wait for these guys, and then once they file their report, then I can go look, do my own stuff, 'cause, 'cause it would be like, you, you'd find all this stuff, so you could spend, you know, six hours doing it, and all of a sudden, he's got five and a half hours of it done for you. Now, if you want it two weeks ahead, that's fine, uh, and make these guys have their, that's the bigger thing, is I think we can tell them we need it two weeks in advance or three weeks.
Yeah, so I was just gonna ask, so what's the turnaround, the, so.
We can set the turnaround.
Application comes in to Kate, and then what?
Well, what is, uh, site plan is sixty-five days, right, and subdivisions is?
Ninety.
Ninety, so there's always time to get it and set the date with these guys. One of the problems is, it's always easier to have a sub do it, 'cause if it's your person, aw, come on, please, but if you got them to do it, they know, you know, you can just drop them as a client, so we'll have a little more, and that was one of the problems we have, and is if, you know, when Liz was here, she'd be off doing something, and she didn't get to it, she's getting pulled different directions. This way, we can set the parameters, whatever everybody thinks, whether it's two weeks or three weeks, or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
For the.
And it would apply to, to which projects exact, or like, which kind of applications, everything, site plan review, special permit?
Yeah, which is.
Subdivision, everything?
Yeah, subdivision, site plans, the special permits, the only thing we don't.
Not like A and R?
No, we, we can, that's, that's, yeah, you don't have to do that, unless we file.
So all the big stuff?
Yeah, the big stuff where they, you get the, the, for lack of better, the John Glosses, the Dan Mary, when they roll in here, uh.
Twelve-page.
Yeah.
Preliminary also, or only?
Uh, not necessarily, because there's not a lot they have to submit with that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I just, I, I would like, you know, for us as a board to just set the parameters, that way, you know, we know and applicants know, like, if you're giving this kinda application, we're gonna send it to our consultant, and you better have everything, or it's not going forward.
Would we, would we have the consultant go back to the, our, the applicant, to say, you're missing these things?
No, but we, we would encourage the applicant, well, what we'd encourage the applicant to do, and here's one thing, first off, we should, and this is why I was gonna kinda go with this, I'm, to ask each one, they all look the same resumes, I'd just like to ask them for a copy of what they do for the towns, to see what they got. So if there's a checklist, they should be giving us the checklist, but what we've been advised by town council is, whatever they submit, we can't tell them they didn't have it there until it opens, which seems weird, but you're not supposed to.
Mm.
They're saying, it's all here, where you go, it's not up to us to review ahead of time, but what would be encouraged for them is to have the checklist, here's the checklist, and if they wanna meet with Kyle ahead of time, or even have a phone conversation with a consultant ahead of time, then when they get everything straight, then submit it.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw.
Should the town pay for them to have a phone call, conversation with the consultant?
Well, maybe it was just with Kyle, but here's.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, well, we can give them what these guys are gonna look for.
Yeah.
I really think, Mr. Chairman, that, that this, one of the steps in this is that, if somebody's coming in, especially with a substantial project, that, that, if, if they're gonna administratively, that they should meet, and, and, you know, it's one thing to give it to Kate, but it's a, and to come in and say, okay, is this a complete application, and are we accepting it, all right? I think they can do that before it has to go to you in open hearing, and said, okay, if you don't have all the things you need to apply, we're not gonna accept your application.
Are you gonna do that with the consultant?
Yeah.
Well, that, yes, that could be an option, that, here, buddy, you wanna fly, you want it stamped in, we'll do it, and if it ain't there, we'll see you that night, and you better be a hundred percent on board, or you wanna do what you said, and he's already started the, he's already, he's gonna do more, no more of the review than he would normally.
Uh, you, I think so, and. While I'm trying to shape this out, 'cause we've never done that, but one of the big problems I've seen in, in, in other places and other times is that, do you have all the things you need to file for this? And exactly what you're referring to, and said, yes, you're filed, and, and the first letter says you're missing this, that, and the other thing, which I think is kind of counterproductive.
Like, things that I find, like, there's no signing block for the planning board, or they haven't shown the, um, you know, the solid waste screened, or something, like, are they gonna go through?
Yes.
All the, like, say, site plan, they're gonna go through all the requirements?
Correct, and just cross it off as they go. You, you've seen how Mackey attorneys do it, and it gets boring, you go, okay, Phil, but they go, item, you got this, you got this, you got this, and it's a checklist.
Yeah.
And it works very well, it's maybe boring for all of us, but they've, they've shown that they've gone through that. I understand what Kyle wants to do, uh, I don't know how the clock would tick, the only thing we'd get into is if they decide not to file, we've already spent the money. Maybe we could try with one, where we give them the checklist the consultant's gonna use, and he checks everything off, and if it ain't checked off, you know, it's on you, buddy, when you come back, 'cause it's gonna get continued for another hearing, 'cause you don't have that information for us.
But would we open the hearing?
Yeah, you still have to open the hearing, we, we're bound by that, but it may not get done. Of course, the other thing is, if you go down the checklist, and he says, oh, I haven't got this, he could get it the next week, so long as he doesn't get within that, uh, fourteen days of the hearing.
Mm-hmm.
We're just trying to make the process a little simpler, yes, Kate?
But, yeah, at what, at what point do we give the, the results of the checklist to the applicant? At the opening of the hearing, or prior to?
No, we, we give them a blank one.
Yeah.
It'll be part of the process, I think, to fill out. He goes down, and he's saying he's got it all, okay, when we get there, and our consultant finds he didn't have it, well, guess what?
So at the, when we open the hearing, we say?
Yes.
Mister applicant, you, you have not submitted a complete application.
Yeah, once it's filed, the way it's been explained by town council is, it's now in the public process, and, and doing things outside of it doesn't work. To me, if I'm filing something, I'd be sitting down, let me look at that checklist, duh, 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 and I might go down, and I might, question on engineer, I might go see Kyle, or I might go see, did I do this with the water department, right? Before you file, a lot of these guys just throw it in, see what sticks.
Hope for the best.
Exactly, and hopefully we don't catch everything.
Yeah.
And I think there might be stuff, but it's, you know, it's.
But that's leaning towards a pre-submission checklist, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, giving them a pre-submission checklist, and here you go, and they should be able, so they can't come back and say, oh, come on, ah, here it is, right here, number thirty-two.
I really favor that, and it makes the board's time and the reviewer's time more productive, and said, when it's open, and we're doing our things, you, you've got it more complete, you're not telling them that things in this.
Yeah.
Now, my, my thought is, I don't wanna take up every, all the talking, but, is I'd like to see what these guys do for the other, just pick a town, and what they do for check, or sample of what they've done. To me, that would tell how in-depth they get, um, you know, hopefully.
Right, yeah, I mean, they might put together a shiny presentation of what's the results.
With what Sarah said, it would be nice to have them come in, show us that, and you talk to them a little bit.
Well, maybe they can, they can email it to us, what, it's a sample, we can look at it, and then if we look at somebody, we think, we love that, we can have them come in and talk to us. I don't wanna have to tie up with three guys doing this.
Makes sense, if we can.
'Cause if somebody comes in with, with this, and then someone comes in with one page, you go, eh, nah. That's how I'll look at it, the more detailed, the more looks like they get into it, that would be, I'd lean to that type of person.
Also, sounds more expensive.
Yeah, but, but you get what you, you get what you pay for, I guess.
Yeah, I know, but, I mean.
But a lot of this, so, you know, some of the checklist is eight copies, boom.
Yeah.
I mean, and it should be bang, 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 it's just a matter of making a nice little list.
It should be, but some applications are really difficult, and you spend a lot of time searching and hunting, and searching, and trying to figure out, yeah, I mean, I, I hear you, but, yeah, so if we can get a sample, so you're asking the three of them to give us a sample of what they would provide?
Yeah, and then we look at it next time, well, we'll get it before, hopefully before the next meeting, if we decide, yeah, this guy looks good, let's have him, give him a shot, and have him come in the next meeting.
There's also a sorting process whereby you have requirements that, and, and for a small project, there's a sorting, and said, these, some of these, many of these things may not be necessary, a very simple modification to a site plan.
Yeah.
Doesn't require traffic reports and all kinds of statements, and, and narratives and whatnot. So part of that is, is to, is to help that screening process, and said, okay, here's a checklist of all the things you need, but in this particular case, you only need a fraction of them.
Yeah, like Bristol Brothers, that's, here you go.
Full-blown.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's big time, and the other ones is even looking at what may come up with, we had those two preliminaries the other week, is to look at what's being submitted for the one off of Main Street, and the one off of High Street. We're starting to get into a little funky, so they're gonna have to make sure that they get everything.
But you said no on the preliminary.
Yeah, I understand that, but they'll leave that.
Yeah, when they come back.
No, but when they come back, we're starting, it's not, as we don't have the big land anymore, it gets tighter, things, you gotta do a little more digging.
More and more creative.
I watched the video of that meeting with that, the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, okay, so.
Okay, so we'll ask for a sample.
Yep.
So, would, would they be on, then, would we have them on retainer, is that the idea?
No, they'd just be at the hourly bill.
And they, we would just call them up, and they would, they provide somebody, would it be, would we try to have the same person?
That would be, well, that would be one of the things I'd recommend, is we get the same person, because we don't need someone reinventing the wheel every time.
Now, that might be something I'll sort of look at, as we talk to each of them, to see, you know, can they, you know, can they do staffing, such that they can, they will give the same person, or would they?
One or two people that we can kind of deal with.
Yeah, and we can ask them, who typically does this, whatever sample you get, who, do they keep consistent? We can ask them in the note, too, 'cause, yeah, we're not looking to reinvent the wheel by any means.
And then we could, you know, if, if we pick one, we could even call a couple of their, their clients, their, you know, other towns, and just kinda do a, a reference call if you're gonna go there, just to see.
Yeah, when we get one of the samples, we can see how this one, yeah, yeah, but I'd like to see how detailed this sample is, and, uh, hopefully, not, not even, an actual, I guess is a better term, I don't wanna see something they, in fact, I wanna see something, you can call up, you know, the town of Sherburne, did they do this? Oh, yeah, what are you talking about, that's something we've never seen before.
Mm-hmm.
So, all right. All right, so we can do that, and what else can we have, that's it, right? Technical drive is just zoning, what's, so, all right. I think we covered everything, make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.